Hi, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the regular City Council meeting of February 19th, 2019, to order. Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez.
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist.
Here.
Councilmember Yu.
Here.
Mayor Potem Fish.
Here.
Mayor Mann.
Here. Tonight for the invocation, we have the pleasure of having Pastor Darryl Kelty of Community of Christ Church located at 9468 Broadway here in Temple City, who will be providing the invocation.
I'll get myself up.
Thank you, Pastor. Please rise for the invocation and please remain standing afterwards for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our heavenly Creator, who is the source of all things good, we, a few of your children, would come into your presence this day to ask that your very present Spirit might be with us as we consider the operations of this city, that our minds and hearts might be open to your Spirit. We do this in all humility, that we may conduct the business of this city, of Temple City, for the best of all the community and all the citizens thereof. We would pray also for the staff, that they might have the wisdom to do their individual tasks with diligence, that they may make Temple City a place to be proud of and a joy to live in. And finally, we would ask too for the audience here gathered, that they too, through their individual and corporate efforts, will make this city a better place, not for this generation, but for the generations to come. We thank you, and amen.
Thank you, Pastor Kelty. Tonight, Boy Scout Troop 161 will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. The scouts presenting the flags are Duncan Vergara, Joshua Sue, Corey Nguyen, and Lucas Tia. Troop 161 will be marching in the Camellia Festival, in the parade, and all weekend, they will be selling their famous funnel cakes at the Camellia Festival.
Right.
Please stop by the booth and support their annual fundraiser at the Camellia Festival. Troop 161.
Cullagard, attention. Cullagard, front and center. Oh, please place the flag of the United States of America. Please post the California State flag. All those in uniform, please, all others, please place your hand over your heart. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a duty public for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice and legitimacy.
Two. Cullagard, norm. Oh, Cullagard, team, the audience is now busy.
Thank you, Troop 161. And now, we're moving on to ceremonial matters. First, we, well, presentations. First, we have a Chamber of Commerce update. I'd like to welcome Mr. Peter Choi, the Chamber of Commerce President.
Good evening, Mayor Mann, City Council, Temple Cityans and city staff. I'm Peter Choi, President of the Temple City Chamber of Commerce with a quarterly report. This covers the fourth quarter of last year, which is October, November, and December, and the highlight of our fourth quarter was our 94th Annual Gala and Board Installation at Lotus House Restaurant, which is right by Super A and Office Depot and The Hat, on October 10th. We were delighted to honor outstanding members of this community. Outstanding small business was Temple City Barber Shop. Born and raised in Temple City owners Josh Ramirez and Stephen Aguirre chose to open their independent small business in their hometown because they loved the diversity of their community. For the past five years, they've helped the boys and men of Temple City look sharp and well groomed. Temple City Barber Shop is more than a place to get a great haircut. It's a true community center where opinions, jokes, and information are freely shared and enjoyed. So, congratulations to Josh and Stephen. Outstanding professional was Adam Chang, lawyer and partner at Kundani Chang Kinda Wilson, KCKW Law Firm, right here on Las Tunas, next to the sheriff's station. Adam Chang is a trial attorney and award-winning former prosecutor with the Los Angeles County District Attorney's Office, where he prosecuted thousands of violent offenders and predators. Adam was awarded one of the highest honors in his office, given to less than 1.5 percent of its prosecutors, for a successful prosecution of a gruesome double homicide gang shooting involving the Mexican mafia in Azusa, California. Currently at KCKW LLP, Adam focuses his practice on estate planning, wealth preservation, and advises a host of small businesses. He also provides legal commentary to Chinese TV LA-18, Chinese radio KAZ and 1300, Chinese World Journal, and Taiwan Daily Newspapers. So, we're delighted to recognize Adam Chang. Are business beautiful? This honor goes to that business that has improved the aesthetic environment of the business community. And since their opening two years ago, this past year's honorary TAT Health Group, right across the street from City Park, certainly has added significant visual beauty to the city's downtown business district with their renovation and redesign of their space on Las Tunas. And just as their building is a merging of the modern and the ancient, TAT is operated by experts in both eastern and western medicine, who combine traditional Chinese treatments like acupuncture and herbal products with modern medicine and nutrition. So, congratulations to TAT Health Group. And last, but certainly not least, our outstanding community leader was a person well-known, I think, to many here, Donna Georgino. A Temple City resident for over 55 years, Donna Georgino was recognized for representing the best of the city's civic and community spirit. A park and recreation commissioner for the city and an active member of the Temple City Women's Club, Donna always gives 100% to her many volunteer activities and is a living example of her favorite quote from John Wooden: "Don't let what you cannot do interfere with what you can do." Donna was also involved in the Duarte Rotary versus Rotary International Court case that went all the way to the Supreme Court. Duarte Rotary won the case, and Donna became one of the first women Rotarians in the world, eventually serving as Duarte Rotary Club President. So, congrats to the four, and I share this to really kind of show the depth and breadth of our honorees, and that Temple City, for a small city, has exceptional individuals that we're delighted to recognize each year. The honorees received certificates from Congressman Judy Chu, our Mayor William Mann on behalf of the city, and from Sandra Maravilla, representing the office of L.A. County Supervisor Catherine Barger. Our special guest included Councilmember Cynthia Sternquist and Mayor Potem Nenet Fish, who also honored us by installing our board members, and Camellia Festival Executive Director Don Tarran, among many others. A highlight of our gala was that our attendees got to hear from both candidates in the race to replace State Senator Dr. Ed Hernandez. As many Temple City residents know, from the volume of mail that you receive, this was a very hotly contested race. And it was an opportunity to hear from both candidates, Baldwin Park City Councilmember Susan Rubio and former Assemblymember Mike Eng. And they were also there working the room, so attendees not only got to hear from them and see them face-to-face and make their own judgment, but also talk to them and engage with them and ask them questions and deliver your concerns. It's part of our role at the Chamber of Commerce to maintain good relations with our elected officials, and that's something we're very proud of. We have excellent relations from Congressman Judy Chu on down. And we congratulate Susan Rubio, who is our current state senator, for her election. Some highlights of the past quarter in terms of chamber activity. Our focus this year, as Mayor Mann knows, as our City Council liaison, is really activating the board. But I always note that the Board of Directors of the Chamber is not similar to the City Council. They're similarly to the many commissions that the city has, Parks and Rec, you know, et cetera, because these are all working people who volunteer their time. There's no per diem, there's no any of that. And so, we keep our, we successfully kept our board meetings to an hour, as our City Council liaison knows. But we're delighted that our board members are now taking on activities. So, for instance, on October 11th and December 13th, the Chamber Legislative Committee Co-Chair Franklin Rudele attended the San Gabriel Valley Legislative Coalition of Chambers meeting, which meets monthly at Monrovia Chamber of Commerce. Now, it meets at the Almonte Chamber. I was delighted to join our Councilman Mayor Potem Nenet Fish at the opening of the Cathay Bank in Camellia Square on November 2nd. And on December 12th, we hosted a joint Chamber Holiday Mixer. We do it every year with the Rosemeat Chamber, and this year was Rosemeat's turn, so we did it at TGI Fridays in Rosemeat. We also hosted a Spark of Love Toy Drive for L.A. County Fire, donated our toys there. One of the roles that the Chamber does as part of our consultant services is engage in regional discussion of economic issues of importance to the city and the surrounding region. As part of that, one element of that is that I meet once a month with my fellow Chamber Presidents and Executive Directors, peer-to-peer group, Valley Association of Chamber Executives, where we talk about legislation, issues within a city, chamber-specific issues. We talk about the fact that no one really knows what a Chamber President does, the myriad number of activities, except our peers. And it's been my honor to have been selected by my peers to serve for the past three years as the Chair of the Valley Association of Chamber Executives, but having served three years, I stepped down and turned it over to Autumn Washington, my peer from another chamber. We also provide resources to business owners. On October 6th, we were the only chamber to participate in the 19th Annual Asian Small Business Expo, presented by the Asian Pacific Islander Small Business Program. The Business Expo engaged the Asian business community, attendees networked with hundreds of business owners, and got a lot of information. October 23rd and 24th, the 8th Annual Southern California Gas Food Service Equipment Expo, we partnered with our Chamber member and good friend, Southern California Gas Company, to promote the food industry's largest showcase of innovative commercial kitchen equipment. November 10th, Congressman Judy Chu had a free event, Emergency Preparedness Workshop at Live Oak Park. We supported that event. I had a whole list of articles that we had published to kind of demonstrate how this Chamber of Commerce, as part of our special role leadership in this city, engages with almost every level of this city. As publisher and editor of Temple City Life, which is the only newspaper devoted 100% to all things Temple City, we engage with anybody who wishes to submit an article, whether they're a Chamber member or not. And you've heard me say it many times when I'm here at this bully pulpit, but I'll say it again. Just submit your articles to the Chamber office by the 20th of each month, and we will do our darndest to find space for it. And so far, we've managed to do that. If it's not time-sensitive, we may hold it for the next month, depending on the space. But certainly, we encourage everyone, whether your son makes Eagle Scout, whether your daughter sells the most Girl Scout cookies, whatever may be happening that you feel is of interest to the community, present, submit it to us, info@templcitychamber.com. Our email and phone number is on the front page of the newspaper. But we covered many articles, but I won't go through this whole list because I'm sure a lot of people here read them already. But we did cover multiple stories and profiles of local businesses covered in Temple City. In the fourth quarter of last year, Cathay Bank joined the Chamber, and I would just like to note that in 2018, the Chamber welcomed 17 new members: Camellia Gifts, Chinese-American Construction Professionals, Kumon Math and Reading Center, World Financial Group, Temple City Barber Shop, Foothill Transit, John Davler, Inc., Autumn Year Services, Golden Pathways, the Quarterly Magazine, which is a coupon magazine that covers Arcadia and Temple City and other cities, comes out every three months, every quarter, and they're available for pickup at the Chamber office. And we encourage you, many people have come by already, but in case you're not aware, they're a member, it covers Temple City, you'll find all sorts of coupons to help you discover new businesses and re-frequent your favorite ones. Cardon Media, Lotus House Restaurant, Princess Lifestyles, Posh Studio and Drybar, Charlesworth and Rug Financial Company, and Cathay Bank. Again, I just share this list to show you the breadth of our membership, whether it's your local church, a hole-in-the-wall restaurant, a large bank. We have a very diverse membership, and we try to service them all. Very quickly now, looking ahead, upcoming, we're very excited about the possibility, presumed possibility, I think likelihood, I should say, of moving into our new offices next door. I've walked it with our City Manager Brian Cook and his assistant, Brian Howarth. It's going to work out. We just have to work out all these, the devil is in the details, but the big picture is it's going to work fine. We're not looking at any construction or any cost like that, and it's going to be a good thing. And we're very excited to be moving to this side of town. We shall see. We don't have a move date yet, but we'll keep everyone apprised. Saturday, February 23rd, we look forward to hosting once again the Royal Court, the judges and VIPs at the Chamber office, the morning of the parade. We were delighted to welcome the Camellia Court, the King and Queen, to our board meeting last week. And finally, our Chamber Mixer, our networking event for February, is Friday, this Friday, February 22nd, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Camellia Festival Beer Garden in the park. So, all are invited, whether you're a member or not. Come by the Beer Garden, 6:00 to 7:00 o'clock, and then when it's over at 7:00, stay for, I think it's Bingo, or the band on the stage, or enjoy the fair. But we look forward to that, and that concludes my Chamber Report for this quarter.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else with questions for Mr. Choi?
No.
No? Okay. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to public comments on items not listed on the agenda. I'd like to call up Ms. Lucy Liu.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem Fish, fellow Councilmembers, City Manager, fellow staff. I am here to remind everybody, this coming Thursday, 5:30 to 7:30, is our Area 2 Neighborhood Watch Meeting at Temple City High Media Center. We already had a pretty good one last month. It was raining, so, but we still had a good attendance. We're hoping to see more people show up. Area 2 is usually pretty well-attended, and the topic for this year again is how to survive an active shooter and also bleeding control. So, these are very important topics in light of the world we live in today, unfortunately. So, please make sure you come and participate, you know, watch the video or ask questions. You know, it's always a great chance to meet your neighbors or meet the team. And also, just to remind everybody to please pray for Deputy Marquez. He's home recovering, but he still has a little bit of a ways to go. If you're not all aware, that's the deputy that was injured, suffered a head injury when he fell off the stairwell, Roseme Boulevard in the plaza across from Kmart. So, we're all hoping that he fully recovers, and hope to see you guys at the upcoming Thursday Area 2 Watch Meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy.
Thank you, Lucy. Is there anyone else who would like to address Council at this time? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment. And moving on to the consent calendar, are there any comments or a motion?
Motion to approve?
Abstain. I'd like to abstain from item C.
Item C? Okay, so, I guess, should we do a motion with, wait, how would?
No, it's fine. Motion second and vote, and that abstention is noted for the record. Thank you, sir.
Okay. All right, we have a motion in a second. Can we have a roll call, please, for this item?
Councilmember Chavez.
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist.
Yes.
Councilmember Yu.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Fish.
Yes.
Mayor Mann.
Yes. So, consent calendar has been approved. Moving on to public hearing, we have none. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, item A, we have the approval of the Committee on Aging Members.
Mayor Mann, members of the Council, Mr. Lawson will provide us the staff report related to this as an action step with the Senior Master Plan, and there's two actions in front of you, the actual group that's for approval, and I request to add a ex officio member. With that, Mr. Lawson.
Thank you, Brian. Well, good evening, Mayor Mann, City Councilmembers. With the adoption of the Senior Master Plan in 2018, staff has been working diligently on the implementation of the various recommended action steps, specifically those listed as immediate or completed, to be completed within one year of adoption. I'm here this evening regarding immediate action step number four, which recommends the establishment of a Committee on Aging under the Parks and Recreation Commission. As you know, on August 21st, 2018, the City Council adopted a resolution establishing the Committee on Aging, and consequently, the Parks and Recreation Department began soliciting for committee members in October of 2018. We spread the word various ways, including the city's website, our social media accounts, announcement of our various programs and events, and also through multiple email blasts and email messages. As a result, we received a total of 17 applications by the established deadline. All 17 applicants were interviewed by the Committee on Aging Selection Team on November 14th and 29th, November 29th, 2018, respectively. The selection team then identified nine individuals based on those interviews, and those individuals' relevant occupation, experience, and other senior-related qualities to recommend to serve on the committee. On, in January 16th, 2019, the Parks and Recreation Commission approved the nine recommended Committee on Aging members, ultimately for the City Council's approval. And at this time, I'd like to introduce the nine recommended members. Several are in here, the audience this evening, so if you want to hear a name, if you could please stand up, that'd be great. The first is Aubrey Chan. Mr. Chan is a program manager, Temple City resident, very active volunteer. He served on the Temple City Senior Master Plan Advisory Committee, as did several others that I'll introduce this evening. We're recommending a one-year term for Mr. Chan, and do, the guidelines for the Committee on Aging did specify having members serve one and two-year terms. So, we got together at the staff level and determined we should probably go a five-two-year and four-one-year at this time. So, you'll see that those terms are recommended, and most of the members were happy with those, so.
Is that only for the beginning, though?
Correct.
Eventually, they'll all go to two-year terms.
Exactly, yes.
All right.
Yes, thank you. Judith Gunther. Ms. Gunther is a retired nurse, Temple City resident, and she currently teaches nursing and mental health classes at Cal State LA. So, we're very excited to have Ms. Gunther, and she'll be serving a two-year term. We all know Jerry Jambezian, longtime Temple City business owner, somewhat active volunteer. He resides in San Gabriel. He'll be serving a two-year term.
When's he going to find time to do this?
Yes, exactly. Lucy Liu, if you all know Lucy, office manager, Temple City resident, very active, including Temple City Neighborhood Watch Program. She also served on the Senior Master Plan Advisory Committee, and she'll be serving a two-year term. Liz Powell. Ms. Powell's a patient liaison for healthcare partners, extensive experience working with our senior population. I know Roman Rodriguez, our rec coordinator, works with her annually on our community fair, health fair, so, very active with our department. We're excited to have her as well. She served on the Senior Master Plan Advisory Committee, resides in Montclair, and she'll have a one-year term. Carol Rodenbacher, retired, our 2018 Temple City Older American of the Year. Very excited to have Carol, two-year term. So, thank you, Carol. Anne Seitz, Ms. Seitz is a retired Temple City Unified School District employee, active volunteer, served on the Senior Master Plan Advisory Committee as well, and she'll be serving a one-year term. Martin Tan de Bivana, I'm sure I butchered that, I got to get that down. He's a retired Temple City resident, worked for the City of Los Angeles Department of Aging for over 15 years, so he's going to be serving a one-year term. Very excited to have his knowledge specifically on aging and those resources he can bring. And last but not least, Michael Wintercorn. Mr. Wintercorn is the county manager for a local nonprofit senior living facility, senior advocate, and he also served on the Master Plan Advisory Committee. He resides in Arcadia, and will be serving a two-year term. So, if the recommended members are approved this evening, the first Committee on Aging meeting is expected to be held in April 2019. Date, time, location exact to be determined, but we do look at starting them at that time, and then regular meetings will be conducted on a quarterly basis thereafter. In addition to approval of the recommended members, Mayor Potem Fish has requested the City Council consider adding a representative from the Temple City Unified School District Board of Education as a non-voting member. So, to that end, the approved criteria and standards of the Committee on Aging currently state that the Parks and Rec Commission and City Council shall each appoint one of its members to serve on the committee as a non-voting rep. So, as such, if the request to add a school district representative is approved by you this evening, we'll just need to revise the criterion standards to reflect that, and such revision would be, take place on March 5th, so we can still hold the first meeting in April. So, that concludes my report, presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Is there any questions from Council at this point?
I just wanted to, I just wanted to make a statement, because I am bringing this to the Council. I had the pleasure of being on the interview board for the Committee on Aging, and one of the questions that we asked every individual was, how could we partner with the school district to provide programs for our seniors? And with that, I think it's a good idea to have a Board of Education member, because we are trying to think of ways, we should be partnering with the school district, and I think this is a good time. I know we are trying to strengthen our relationship with the school district, so that's why I'm asking this tonight.
Yeah, that was a question you asked, not a question they asked of you.
It was a question.
You guys asked of them.
We asked of them, yes.
And what were their responses?
Well, they were all different kinds. There were, oh, I can recall a couple. One of them was possibly having students come and teach our seniors how to use their iPhones or use their computers.
Couldn't you guys go to the schools and do that yourselves?
We could, but I think if, I believe that if we had a school board member, it would be much easier to help implement that, and we may be able to do some of these things at the school district.
The reason I ask is, I just, in reading this report, I just don't, I just don't see how adding someone from the school district benefits this aging committee. I really don't see the connection, because when I'm looking at the basic functions, I see that the ex officios from Parks and Rec makes sense, because it's under their department, and of course, the City Council, because everything has to be approved by us. I don't see where throwing the school board into this mix has any kind of connection, and why not other groups in the city? I mean, you've got other groups out there that could probably add something to this. Why the school district? I just don't see that. And I don't know if somebody can explain to that to me, or?
We would have two representatives from other groups. We'd have Carol from the Women's Club, and we'd have Jerry.
Yeah, but they're voting members. I'm talking about the ex officios.
Oh, the non-voting.
Non-voting. Well, I think the school district has a lot to offer.
Like?
Well, I think they have their facilities. I think they have, you know, they have their experience with students. Maybe they would have some input to what the students would like to do with our seniors.
But this group isn't going to make any agreements with the school district. They have no power to make any agreements for facility use.
No, but they're, they're there to bring ideas. That's what, this particular committee is to bring ideas. They can't, of course, implement anything, and they can't approve anything.
I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking, the people we have on there right now seem like a pretty good group, and they're going to come up with, I'm sure, a lot of good ideas. I don't know how adding a non-voting member from the school district benefits that. That's just my opinion.
Okay.
I didn't see any reason for it in the report, and I'm not hearing any particular reason. reason other than what's applicable to anybody who brings an idea.
Maybe Mayor Pro Tem Fisher, I guess, a question I have is, does the school board know about this suggestion that you're bringing to council, and do they have someone that they have in mind that would be a part of this?
Well, they don't, but they do currently have a school board member who was the chairman of this committee, and I think it would be really great if we could get that particular person, but that wouldn't be up to me, that would be up to them to decide.
Okay. So part of the process would, the school board would then have to kind of do their thing and figure out who they want to?
Correct.
Be a part of this if this was?
Correct.
Approved.
Yeah. They would have to pick the person.
Okay.
I mean, I know who I have in mind, but.
We're not selecting them, right?
No.
We, I guess we have not talked to the school district. I mean, this is just something that for us to consider, right?
Right.
I mean, they haven't made the decision they're gonna send anybody.
Well, no, we, we can't.
Shouldn't before we add somebody, maybe inquire whether they're even interested in doing that?
Yeah, I thought that might be.
Well, we could, but I don't know if that's the.
If we're gonna redo the, the standards and criteria, it would be kind of a waste of time if they say, well, no, thank you, we're not interested. Maybe somebody should reach out to the school board and see if they're interested even being part of this. I don't know whether they are or not.
When do you meet?
When do I meet?
The liaison for us.
We kind of schedule as we go.
So no upcoming meeting?
No.
No, I don't think so. I mean, I don't wanna presume that we're gonna thrust them, this upon them, and they make their own decisions, and I think before we approve it, we should at least ask if it's something they might be interested in, and all they can do is say yes or no. Maybe we could have staff contact them and see if it's something they wanna do. I think that's the very least. If they say, yeah, that sounds like a good idea, we're all excited about it, and then we come back and amend the bylaws or whatever, I guess, or whatever you have to do. Also, the other question I had, how do, to refresh my recollection, Steve, how we defined the community? Most of our committees and commissions are all usually from within the city boundaries. I noticed that we have a few here that do not live in the city. Is it live, work? I mean, do we have any guidance on that?
Yeah, when we selected the Master Plan Advisory Committee, one of the guidelines was individuals who lived, worked, or had a connection to the senior population within the city of Temple City.
Okay, so we have something.
So we kind of, yes, yeah, that we kind of went off that.
I didn't see that in the Exhibit 1, Attachment A, Committee on Aging Criteria and Standards. I don't, I don't see anything there. I'm wondering if something should be there for future reference for people who are applying, as we do for most of our committees and commissions, that we have at least some kind of, something in writing that says how you qualify for it, or the basis for doing that, rather than?
Sure, yeah, we just went with the extension of the requirements for the Master Plan Advisory Committee, so if we want to specify that, we certainly could.
Well, I think if we're gonna maybe clean this up and add something with, with the school board, maybe we should put something in there. You could put it under, under membership. Right now, it currently reads it should consist of at least nine representatives of the community, and I.
Number three.
Or number three, where is that? Membership, okay, professionals, community members, professional in the field of aging. Okay, so that, so that's the one that, that, we're gonna use that as a criteria, then, correct? Is that, is that it, Kathy?
Steve, I have a question for you. Do you know if on the application, it said anything about the criteria?
On?
I don't remember.
Yes, we did, on the, on the application, I don't recall if it specified, well, certainly didn't say you have to live in, within Temple City.
It didn't say, right.
That was the extent of it, correct.
Okay, right. I know it had everyone's address, but.
Yes, correct.
See, but you didn't look at number three, it's still a little kind of vague, isn't it? It says, it starts with the same members, we jump from community members, and I'm not really sure what that word "community" means. Is there a meaning to that? Is that within the Temple City boundaries? How do we define "community"? Because I know somebody at some point is probably gonna call us on that and say, well, wait a minute, you know? I'm part of the community, I've been to this city a few times.
When, when these standards were adopted by the council, and the commission as well, there was some discussion about whether they needed to be residents or not, and the direction was no, they did not. And I know at the commission level, anyway, there was a discussion about whether they had to be a business owner or work in Temple City. I think that's where we have taken that to mean, is either live or work in Temple City.
So shouldn't it say persons representing the Temple City?
Well, let me back up, and that's not a hundred percent true what I just said, and I apologize.
No, I was gonna say, that's not what I'm understanding.
We, we didn't wanna limit it to residents and even business owners or persons that work in the city, because there are a lot of people that are from the general community that just live outside the boundaries of the city, that have a lot of experience with seniors and senior issues. So we wanted to keep it open, similar to your previous Public Arts Commission, that did not have the restrictions that the other commissions do. So we really didn't define it specifically, because we wanted to leave it somewhat open-ended.
But if I remember, on the Public Arts, we limited it to either living in the city or, or business in the city, didn't we?
I don't think so. I think if they had a background in art, they would be considered as well.
Okay, I don't remember. Well, I don't know. If you're comfortable with the, with those parameters, I guess, you know?
I think when, when we, every time when we're recruiting for new members every year, one of the things that I believe would be looked at is what their ties are to, to Temple City and the community, whether they live here, or they work here, or there's gotta be some other connection. I don't think there would be any benefit to having someone serve on this committee that does not have any tie to Temple City, and I think that would be carried on by whoever are the liaisons and the staff members that are selecting those, and the council ultimately would be approving them.
Well, I'm just thinking where it says persons representing the business community. I know the chamber many times has business members, but they're not what you would say in our community, they're from other areas. So would they fall within that definition?
I think they could apply. Whether they would be selected or not would be the, what's to be determined.
Well, would that be a basis, then, for not selecting them? Because they're not within what you would define as a business community?
No, that, that, to me, in my personal mind, that would not be a business for not, a reason for not selecting them. A reason for not selecting might be that they really don't have any tie to the community or the older population in Temple City, other than their relationship with the Chamber of Commerce.
But it seems, it seems like the interviewers, which included a member from our city council, Parks and Rec Commission, I would presume they keep those in mind during the interview process, so. So I, I think the keeping it vague actually opens up our options a bit more.
Well, it opens up options, but it also opens up possible complaints from people who are applying that feel that they are within the business community. Until we actually put that in writing, or what that means, it's, I mean, any time you fill out an application, you believe that you qualify until there's something that says you don't. If you, you find that out halfway through the interview, that's not really the best time, I think, for a potential applicant to probably feel, to find that out, and would feel a little bit misled, perhaps.
Councilmember's third question, other question?
Just a clarification, there's one-year terms and two-year terms.
Well, that's because we're just starting.
Just for now.
Just for now.
And then it will be two-year terms.
Staggered.
Eventually, everybody will become two years.
Two years.
Remember, we always do that with new commissioners, because we have to have that. We don't wanna have to select a whole new one every time.
You know, I, I know we had talked about this when we were doing it, but there's only four meetings. I don't think at the time I knew there was only gonna be four meetings when we set that up. So there's only fours, there's quarterly meetings, so even if you serve two years, you only have eight meetings in two years. I, I'm not sure how much can get done with only quarterly meetings.
Well.
Why was that?
I think they, they can meet more often.
Oh, you can meet more often.
There will be likely working groups within this committee that will meet more regularly. And the other thing is, the members that are serving a one-year or two-year term can always reapply, so it doesn't mean that they serve two years and they're done. They can always reapply, just like any other commission.
Okay.
Also, I'm wondering, getting back real quickly, I'm sorry, just real quick to the, to the, the school board issue. Do we, do we know for a fact that they're allowed to serve on a committee like this as a school board member? Maybe that's another question we should ask as well.
I don't know. Brian, do you know?
I don't know if they're prohibited, or?
Of course, we don't. He's not here tonight, though.
I don't see a reason why, but why not? We can ask that question.
Okay, yeah, you don't see it, but it may be there.
Could be, but I mean, there doesn't.
We should at least ask.
The only, the only conflict I would see is if there was some, well, we enter into agreements with the use of facilities now with the school district. Off the top of my head, I don't see one, but I'll, we can take.
Well, that raises another issue, is that there could be conflicts of interest at this point, even if we do agree that they, to put somebody on, there could be a potential conflict of interest, but that's, just goes with the territory. If we're gonna vote, if they're gonna address a joint-use agreement or something like that.
Right, but there's always the chance, I mean, we're a small community, so.
They're not voting anyway, so.
Right, and they're not voting.
That's the key.
That's the key, is they're not voting.
Well, I, I don't, I guess in concept, I don't have a problem with, I just, I'm just really not, I'm not sure of the connection, and then also, again, I don't, are they interested in doing that? Maybe, maybe we should at least ask first, before we presume that, hey, by the way, you guys are gonna have a position on this committee. I mean, that wouldn't seem too hard to, to, you know, to find out. And then, then of course, the next question is, well, do we appoint that person, or do you appoint it? Obviously, I think the best course would be, as we do with other ones, is let them appoint it, and then of course, we usually confirm it, I guess.
Did anybody apply from the school district that serves on the board?
I don't believe so, no.
No.
And could one of, well, that's another question. Could one of their, let's say one of their school board members wanted to be on this committee, could they?
Could they?
Apply for that as well? I mean, do we have any?
Yeah, now, now, if they're a voting member, now I think you're getting into a conflict of offices. When they're a non-voting member and are there to provide information and insight, that's a little bit different thing as an ex officio member. If they applied and were selected as a voting member, now you are getting into a conflict between the two offices.
All right, well, maybe let's, we should open the public comment first for this item, before we get too much into the discussion. So at this point, I'd like to open the public comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this item? Mr. Jambasian?
Come on, Jerry.
Well, I feel well-qualified to serve on this committee. Next month, I'll be seventy-five, and I'm looking forward to it. But I've been a part of the community for sixty-four years.
Yes, you have.
And a business owner in Temple City. I live two blocks from Temple City, part of the Temple City Unified School District, but I cannot be involved into these type of things. So whenever this opportunity opened up to me, I grabbed it, because there's a lot of things that excluded me, because I did not live in the city. So I'm happy to serve on the committee, I think I have something to offer, and I'm looking forward to it. Actually, looking forward to getting the shirt, too, the official shirt, you know? I, I hope that's in the works, but that'd be kinda neat. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry.
And Jerry, I hope you didn't take my comments to mean that I didn't think you were part of the community.
No.
I, I just, I guess maybe the lawyer in me is, is whenever I see a term that's used, especially in this situation, that it should be, especially used as a criteria for selection, it should be clearly defined, rather than leave it to the, to the whim of those who are doing the interviewing. That was the extent of my comments. I think everyone that's on this list is clearly a part of our Temple City community, but, you know? Including Jerry.
All right, is there anyone else who'd like to address the council, or Miss Lucy Liu?
With regards to the school district partnership, my take on it was, we want to bring the younger generations together with the aging generation, and what better segue than to have somebody from the school district? Because, yes, we may have connections in the schools, but to have somebody representing the school district that can provide us information, that can help facilitate some of these coalitions that we may form, would be very valuable, and particularly, the use of their facilities, because we do have a lack of facilities. So if there is a way that we can somehow have somebody on the school board that's, although not a voting member on our committee, who can bring back information that we discuss, and facilitate that discussion amongst the rest of the school board members, and even discussing it with the school staff, the school district staff, that's what we're hoping to be able to achieve by having this person on the committee. It's really, you know, a lot of times, I know people in the school district, I try to, to get things done, but it's, it's hard when, when, when you don't really have somebody who can push for it on their end. So, so, you know, that's, that's one of the ideas that, you know, I think we kind of discussed and, and thought that it was very, it would be useful if we had somebody from the school district. But, yeah, it would be great if we can find out if they wanna be on it, because they may not wanna be on it, which, darn, you know, that just takes away that ability for us to have a bridge, because I understand we do have an ad hoc committee for the city council, and unfortunately, because of the things that have been happening within the school district, it hasn't really been going anywhere. But really, if the city can find more ways to work together with the school district, I mean, you know, the kids are the future of, of the world, and if we can help, and people are getting older, we have a larger aging population, I'll be one of them soon, so I'll hit the AARP mark soon. But, you know, if there's a way we can bridge the two worlds, it would be wonderful. So that, that's, that's just my put, thanks.
And I don't disagree with you, I just think, especially with issues like you brought up with the use of facilities, that may be overstepping the bounds of this group, since the city is continually working with, with the school district in that regard as well. So it would probably be something that we don't want necessarily two different groups working on it that may be inconsistent with what the city council is trying to do, so.
All right, is there anyone else who'd like to address? Oh, okay, Miss Carol Rodenbacher.
Hi, I'm Carol Rodenbacher. It's interesting that you mentioned the school board, because I ended up going to the Qantas meeting today, because my husband couldn't, I was sent in his place, and sitting behind me was Matt Smith, who knew nothing about this committee, and was asking me questions. So I don't know who on the school board is aware of this committee, but I can tell you that their chairman is not. He was asking me a lot of questions about it, so, just a little information.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm sure the Qantas club preferred to have you there. Right, Jerry?
Thanks, I'm here.
Poor Bob.
Bob, Bob knows I'm just kidding.
Not at all.
Wow.
Soon he hears you, Tom.
Yeah, that's true.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this matter? All right, see, no, no, close, public comment, council discussion, is, we haven't really heard from councilmember you, have, is there anything you'd like to?
I'd say something. I did mention if the school board knew that they're gonna have a member. So I'm, I'm, I agree with the discussion thus far, the points that raised by Casimiro Chavez. I think it's a great idea, I enjoy the fact that you're linking the senior with the, our younger generation, and see how they can serve them, and, but, but I think that we probably should reach out to the school board to see if they're interested first. But, and then I appreciate all the people who volunteer and applied to be on the, to serve on the committee. Thank you very much.
Do you see any issue with, say, moving forward with changing that portion and reaching out to the school board simultaneously? Is there?
I was, I was just gonna ask Brian how we do that, 'cause I didn't realize that we should ask them first. I thought we would approve it and then ask them. I mean, what's, what would be the protocol?
But we have to change the?
Usually, I, usually I have to take the council direction as to what that, what that does, but if that's the council direction tonight, then I can reach out to the school board to do that.
All right, well, like Mayor Pro Tem Fish?
I could do it simultaneously, I mean, if, if you, if I can, I can come back at the next meeting and provide your feedback, that at least I've gotten from my college, from the superintendent, as to it.
Although. Although, is it, is it the superintendent that you wanna talk to, or her boss, the, the school board?
Yes, it would be, yes, it would be the school board. I would just be facilitating that to get their feedback.
And I don't know who the contact would be.
Now, would you get their feedback, or would you, it be on their agenda?
It, it would seem to me that the city manager would reach out to the superintendent, ask it to be agendized for the school board to decide whether they are interested. If they are interested, it would come back to you, probably not in two weeks, because they'll have to agendize it first, probably in four weeks or six weeks. At that point, you can make the change, and potentially make some other changes to meet Councilman Chavez's concerns, and changes to your membership requirements, and then, once those changes are made, the school board at their next meeting can appoint their ex officio member.
But in the meantime, they can go forward, they can.
In the meantime, the committee is currently constituted, can begin, begin work right away, yeah. Yeah, yeah, we wouldn't wanna stop that while we wait for this.
I'm good with that.
Okay. Councilmember Sternquist?
Well, I honestly don't think it can hurt in any way, and if one of the numbers there says that at any time, somebody, if the committee finds someone as they need, that they think would add value to it for whatever reason, that they can appoint someone, I don't know if it's appoint, or what is, it says, it's number?
Six.
Six, additional members may be appointed, so it is appointed, to the COA during the year if the proposed member, members have the potential to bring professional stature and/or experience beneficial to the mission of the COA. I mean, that's pretty open-ended.
Right, except this would be a non-voting member.
Who appoints them?
That's what, yeah.
We do.
That's not very clear either.
With, with an ex officio member, what you would do is, is you would just modify Section Four to say in much the same way that the city council and.
No, I know, that, that's not the issue, I think, that, that Councilmember Sternquist, she's, she was, she was.
About appointing.
Oh, your point. Paragraph six, about additional members may be appointed to the Commission on Aging during the year. Does that, does that mean?
City council.
The city council appoints them, or?
That would be an appointment by the city council, but that would.
They're the only people that can appoint.
It's not clarified.
But it should say that, shouldn't it?
That would also.
Come on, Mr. Attorney. Back me up here.
You're right.
That tells me that the whole group can do it.
Well, it doesn't, it's not clear, it's not clear. Yeah, that tells you, maybe the committee on aging does it.
Maybe the ex officio from the school.
Maybe the ex officio does it, I don't know. Somebody's gonna do it.
I don't know, I think we're spending a lot of time on this.
Yeah, well. Hey, also, just remember that if you're interested in the view of the youth of our community, we do have a youth committee in the city, who would, I'm sure, love to help out and vice versa with this thing, since they're already there, so, yeah.
So, Councilmember Sternquist, what's your take?
I don't know, I, I'm good with approving this tonight, and then saying, it's available. If nobody wants to do it, they don't wanna do it. But I think it just kind of puts the thing in motion, if you will.
All right, thank you. And, uh, Councilmember Chavez?
Nothing more, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And, um, so I'll, I'll just say, a lot of great comments, um, I think it's a fantastic idea to reach out to the school district and see if they're willing to engage on this. I mean, Mayor Potem Fish talked about building bridges, Miss Lucy Liu talked about forming coalitions. I think the only way we get things done is by reaching out and not staying within our own shells. I agree with Councilmember Sternquist that I'm okay with moving forward with that change and then getting everything just rolling, since things already move as slowly as it is with all the rules and things that we have to follow, so.
Tell me about it.
Anything to get things going, within the legal boundaries of what we can do, is certainly an effort that I think we should make. And, and also considering Mayor Potem Fish, your assessment of a former Parks and Rec Commissioner, now on the school board, it seems like.
Be nice.
I guess, if I were just to venture a guess, I, I would be more surprised if they weren't, didn't want to engage us on this matter.
I agree.
So, I think, given all the sort of things that have happened over the years, whatever we could do to be proactive and reach out and extend a hand in partnership is something we should definitely move forward with. So.
I'll make a motion to approve the ex officio member, and.
The whole committee? Right. There's two things we're approving, right?
Yeah, so there's an approval of the.
Approval of the members.
Of the members?
Yeah, of the members, and also the.
Addition of.
Addition of the ex officio mem, member. From the school board. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Is that, is that two different motions, or is that?
No, it was, it was one item, the recommendation included both.
It was the approval of the members, number one, and the addition of.
So I have to vote yes or no on the whole, or?
You could make a substitute motion to separate them. And, and deal with item one first and item two separately.
Okay, well then I would make a motion that we separate the two items.
Okay.
But there's no second.
No second.
No second, okay. All right, so we'll, we'll have two separate motions now, one for item one and one for item two?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so first, I mean, we have a roll call for the first item, which is the approval of the.
Committee.
Committee members?
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember you?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Fish?
Yes.
Mayor Mann?
Yes. Congratulations, members. Okay, so we have a second motion for item two, for adding a member of the Temple City Unified School Board as a ex officio member. Maybe we have a roll call for the second motion, please?
Councilmember Chavez?
No.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember you?
No.
Mayor Potem Fish?
Yes.
Mayor Mann?
Yes. So, um, the second motion has passed three to two, and so as per discussion, Mr. Cook will be reaching out to the district office to.
Got it.
Get that rolling. All right, so that concludes item ten A, and so we're moving on to item ten B, fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen mid-year budget review, treasurers report revenue expenditure and capital project summer reports.
Mayor Mann, members of the council, as Ms. Perez comes to the podium, I'll give a little overview on my part. As you've been probably reading around the San Gabriel Valley, there are some significant financial challenges that cities around us are facing. Our colleagues to the east of us, the city of Arcadia, they have just, just declared a fiscal emergency.
Excuse me, can we wait for, uh?
We just, just declared a fiscal emergency in the city of Arcadia. My, our colleagues to the east of us, San Gabriel, are going through some extremely tough financial challenges. Some, and, and speaking with my colleagues throughout the San Gabriel Valley, they're seeing some similar trends. And those trends are lower-than-expected projections on some of the major general fund growth areas, and in particular, the housing downturn is starting to significantly hit. And Ms. Perez will provide you with some evidence of some, this'll be, last year, if you remember, we made no adjustments during, during the mid-year budget report, and usually we had made upward projections. Last year, kind of pretended what we, and kind of predicted possibly what could become forward, and today, we're gonna make some adjustments downward on, on our mid-year budget report. We are not in a fiscal crisis like the other cities are, I can't say that with a straight face to our bargaining units or anybody else of the community, but we have to be extremely cautious going forward in terms of the operating, the operating budget of the city, what we pay for on a day-to-day basis, our sheriff's contract, our contract for city services, and all of the work that our great employees do here at the city. You'll, you also have some, I, and Ms. Perez will talk about this a little bit in general, some of the other broader trends that are happening, especially on the pension obliga, on the pension side. Those costs are increasing. Susan provided an update on her own, with her, her take and her, and assumptions related to the five-year plan, our, our five-year forecast, some of those assumptions that are a little bit better in a couple areas, but still, costs are increasing, and the revenue and the income that comes along with that is not increasing at the same pace. So, we are not, and many other cities around us are either getting the same message during their mid-year budget report, or as are going through their budget process. There's not too many agencies that are going through that. Luckily, again, the council has made the prudent decision, over the time that I've been here and prior, to put away money for reserves. We have a very healthy reserve account, so there's not an issue of a cut in services or any of those types of evaluations that need to be drastically done today. You're going to see for the first time, probably that you've, maybe some of you have seen on the time of, being on the council, that we are actually deficit spending in our operating budget this year, based on some of the revisions that Susan has made. So, it is a bit of a sobering report in time, but nothing to get, we're not, we're not in any type of panic mode or any, any type of crisis, but this year and, and the years going forward are going to be very tough. And with that, I'll hand it over.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, councilmembers.
Good evening.
And, so this is our annual mid-year city budget review for fiscal year two thousand eighteen, nineteen. And as a background, you remember, you call you adopted fiscal year two thousand eighteen, nineteen, and two thousand eighteen. And over this last six months, from July to December, there have been a few adjustments to the budget. And then also as a purpose of this mid-city budget review, it's, it's an essential element in maintaining our financial stability. It, it provides city council an opportunity to review the general fund and other, some of the minor funds. And then by making some adjustments, we achieve a more accurate budget for the current fiscal year. And then lastly, helps us plan out our next year's budget. So what we're, I'm requesting tonight is that you receive as well the fiscal year mid-year report, allowing to relate a document or attach to the staff report, and also authorize staff to make the adjustments and attachments to the M V. So basically, the presentation overview is, we'll review the general fund budget, which is our primary operations resources, the proposed mid-year adjustments, a five-year of brief financial projection, and also brief schedule of next year's nineteen, twenty budget schedule. This is just to show you what our revenues look like in the general fund. As you can see, thirty-one percent of the pie is from our vehicle license fees, twenty percent is property tax, and the next largest one's fourteen percent with the sales tax. And the rest are more of the charges for services and the smaller revenues stream you see. The next one is the expenditures by function. As you can see, the biggest chunk is public safety. That is normal in, in other cities, however, as you can see, it's only thirty-four percent for us. I've worked for a city where the, the budget revenue is sixty percent of this public safety. So we're in good shape with this one. General government's point seven, and then Parks and Rec are about seventeen percent. So what does our budget summary for general fund look like? Initially, the adopted budget resulted in operating a surplus of just a little over twelve thousand dollars. However, when we captured the capital improvement budget, we're in a deficit of about seventy, sixty-one thousand dollars. The projected or estimated seventeen, eighteen fund balance was just under eighteen point one million, which at the end was estimated at seventeen point three total fund balance. So with the July through December revisions of seventy thousand dollars, that adjustment of the fund balance went down to about seven.
Point two five. So what are the proposed mid-year adjustments? For the general fund revenues, we have building permits, we're looking at a downturn for that. The, there is a slowdown in counter activity, which is the reason why that's down this year. We, however, you can see that temporary parking permits, court fines, and engineering fees are up. Again, transactions for that are, have increased. The two largest reduction we have are the plan check fees. Again, counter activity has just not been there as estimated. And the recreation fees are classes with the, I guess, lack of use of facilities from the school district. The classes are not held on site, therefore, registration is down. So we're requesting a sixty thousand dollar reduction in the estimated revenues. The rental income of ten thousand dollars, it was just underestimated for the year. So in total, the revenue adjustment is a decrease of one hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars.
A quick question, the reduction in plan check fees, do you know roughly what percentage of a drop-off that is compared to?
That's twenty percent.
Twenty percent.
Of the budget.
Of the budget, okay.
Mm-hmm. And there are no, according to director, there are no big projects anticipated.
Okay.
Which is why we dropped off twenty percent.
Susan, does this take into consideration, looking forward, the increase of the fees that council just approved?
No, this does not look into that.
Okay.
But that increase is quite minimal, I think we were increasing like.
I was just, wasn't sure if it was included in, when you forecast for the five years.
Yeah.
So the next adjustment is regarding expenditures. Of course, on the other side of the reduction revenues, we don't have as much expenses on the building permits, and as you can see, the plan checks, they're also both down. Code enforcement, we had a case, a situation case about the cannabis issue, and also additional enforced court, or court trials. So we're requesting a twenty thousand dollar increase in expenditures. And then, again, with Parks and Recreation, with the lack of courses or classes offered, there's also no need to, for additional staff. So we're requesting a fifty-four thousand dollar reduction there. And so the net expenditure adjustment is one hundred and forty-four thousand dollars decrease. So this is the budget summary with the proposed adjustments. The total net is a reduction of four thousand dollars in the fund balance. The one good news is, on the seventeen, eighteen fund balance, audited fund balance, we are slightly eight hundred thousand dollars higher than what was estimated in the original budget adoption. So we're looking at eighteen point nine at the end of June thirty, two thousand eighteen. And with the revised budgets, we're looking at June thirty, two thousand nineteen estimated general fund balance of just under eighteen point one million dollars. And that's also taking into account the capital improvement budget already. So there are other funds that have slight adjustments to them. One is the CDBG fund, and what happened is more borrowers have paid off their loans. So revenue-wise, we have just under twenty-two thousand. At the same time, we have to remit that twenty-two thousand to CDBG, so the offset is basically zero. And then with proposition A and C, we are transferring about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars of Prop A expenses into Prop C, because we have a deadline in using the funds in Prop C, and we'll have to expend that by this year. So those were the only adjustments for fiscal year eighteen, nineteen. So we move into the five-year projection for the general fund. So the influencing factors are, in our revenues, are basically sales tax revenues will be flat, especially next year, nineteen, twenty. However, I did factor a one percent increase in twenty, twenty-one, and then two percent from then, from subsequent years. Our property tax revenues, we're looking at a minimal increase of the two percent that county usually increases in the assessed valuation of the properties. As Brian mentioned, housing sales have slowed down, even though the prices are still high, although the prices aren't going as quickly as they used to. And additionally, higher mortgage rates make it more difficult for potential buyers to purchase a home. And then with the slowdown of the home sales, our transfer tax is also projected to decrease. As you can see, it's a ten percent decrease. As you can see, it's a 10% decrease I'm projecting in 1920 and a 5% decrease in 2021. And then with the building permits, the slowdown of activities, we're reducing it a 5% for 1920. The in-lu vehicle license fees continue to increase, so this is the only one, one of the few revenues that are, have a 5% increase that I've adjusted for in the next five years.
Susan, you might explain what's the in-lu vehicle license fees?
This, years ago, and I don't know what year it is, the, before, before California reduced the vehicle license fees that all vehicle owners, you know, your registration fees, they lowered those fees, I don't know if it was the Gray Davis era.
Schwarzenegger.
Oh, Schwarzenegger, okay. So what happened was cities were getting vehicle license fees, and then they lowered the fees so that it made the cities less whole. To make us whole, they gave us property tax backfill that reduction. So that's what the in-lu is, so...
So it's actually property tax?
Yes.
Well, it's based on the vehicle license.
It is a pretty complicated formula. It's based on what your assessed valuation is citywide plus the amount of...
Assessed value of property.
Yeah, because...
Of real property.
Right, because back in the day, way back in the 1930s, what the state considered vehicles part of your property within the city you resided. So back when the first Schwarzenegger administration, if you remember back in the day, they did the big thing about cutting the car tax.
Right.
But that formula essentially, as Susan was talking about, essentially cut most cities' vehicle license fee revenue by about 70%. As you can see from the percentages that Susan was showing earlier, that's a huge portion. That's a huge portion of a lot of cities' budgets. So what they did was came up with a pretty convoluted formula to backfill that funding so that agencies would be made whole. So if they were pulling in $4 million the year prior, even though the tax went down 60%, they pulled in $4 million again.
But would it be correct to say that it's a form of property tax coming back to us?
Yes.
Right?
It basically means instead of getting, instead of getting the vehicle license, that's the in-lu of, we now get it from the property tax.
Yeah, but it, it's a factor of how much property value it would give the city.
That's one component, that's one component of the formula that's part of how that gets reimbursed back to us. It's a pretty convoluted...
A whole convoluted formula.
So nobody can explain, nobody can question it, I guess. Anyways, but what I'm trying to get to is that, I want to understand for myself, is that if the real estate property value goes up or down, how's that impact?
There is a lag, there's a lag time in that, in that, and how that plays out. But I think in my time, and probably Susan can attest to this too, I've never seen VLF go down in my entire, in my entire 20-plus year career.
That's good to hear.
Yeah, it's good, and it's why we can account for, and that's why I think Susan feels comfortable with that number staying there.
In fact, the increase has been between 67% the last few years. However, I like to conservatively project the 5% in case there are vehicle license fees that go down or car, consumers stop purchasing cars.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions? So for the expenditure side, the influencing factors are, we know sheriff's contract increases about 5% a year. So in the next five years, it's an increase of 5%. Health premiums have averaged between 7% to 8% in the increases. And since we provide 100% of employees' premiums, that's also factored in. What's not included, as Brian explained, is CalPERS actuarial amortization policy changes. What this does, the main change they have is basing our unfunded liability on a 30-year payment plan and moving it to a 20-year payment plan. It's almost like looking at your mortgage, where you have a 30-year mortgage where your payments are lower, but your interest payments are higher. When you move to a 20-year mortgage, your payments are higher, but your interest costs are lower.
Right.
And what CalPERS is trying to do is get more money upfront rather than waiting till the end. So it's hard to say what effect this will have on us or how much it will have effect because right now they're trying to also have a smoother payment plan rather than ramping it up and then ramping it down. So they want to make it more smoother, they have more money upfront. Their pension program remains, or they want to make it more stable than what it is now. So it'll affect a lot of cities, and I think this is one of the biggest issue a lot of the CalPERS agent members are concerned about and watching out. We won't find out what the rates would be until 2021, but they won't implement those rates till 2120. So it's hard to determine how much more our costs are going to go up with them. And also another issue that's not included is this, there are no salary benefit increases, only merit step increases for those who are not at the top step yet, provided their performance evaluation is positive.
I'm sorry, I missed that part about, you said the rates won't be known until 2021.
Their actuarial won't be available till 2021 because they're basing the actuarial on June 30, 2019 data.
Okay.
But the rates will, will not be implemented till the fiscal year 2122.
Oh, 2122.
So we'll know in 2021 what they are, but it won't be implemented against the, or the rates won't be applied till the 2122 budget.
Is it safe to just assume that it's just going to go up?
I, yes. Yes. I don't think pers will ever go down.
I have one question on influencing factors. I know lately we've been looking at a lot of the stormwater treatment, the whole E-WIM, enhanced watershed management plan, all that. And at the same time, we also have Measure W that passed. Now, have we analyzed the overall effect potentially? Because at one time we said, well, there's no way we could afford paying for the meeting the TMDL requirements. So how is that, have you guys looked into that? What does that mean to us?
The only cost factors are the cost factors that we know in, during this, the course of this fiscal year. Projecting out any further liability that we have is not, is not included in this, in this forecast.
I know, but what is the forecast? If we don't know, maybe we should start looking at that and see what that really mean to us.
Right, and I think we're...
Because we could potentially look at some pretty large, pretty big numbers.
It definitely could be if, if the state and the state water board looks at starting to truly enforce what those requirements are, those are pretty astronomical numbers that we would have to get to. So I think there'll be, there'd be a guide path towards either trying to reach some type of substantial compliance and how much that would be over time, or, or looking at the really, the hard number that we've, every agency has agreed to and through the MS4 permit and saying, okay, that's the number we got to project out and amortize over the next, the life of, the life of the, the life of the plan.
For example, we, I thought we agreed to participate in a certain, I forgot the name of the E-WIM is, but we're part of the watershed, and then we're part of one of five cities or...
Yeah, there's, there's, in terms of the Measure W, there's two distinctions.
And I think we agreed to pay for the, for the study.
Correct.
Right, but if, and when this thing becomes real, is Measure W going to help us pay for that? Or who's going to pay for the actual construction?
Looks like we're going to pull in about 300 grand from Measure W now. How we would be able to either bond against, say, we have a large liability of a project of that size, which is 10, 20, or 30 million dollars, whatever the number comes out to be. Either, there, it hasn't played out in terms of how we would use that money to either pay into the E-WIM to say, here's our contribution. Are they going to debt service that? That, that still hasn't all played out completely yet as well. But it's, it's a fact, it's a factor that's out there. It's kind of the unspoken factor that's out there right now, not included in this five-year projection, just kind of what we know for the compliance that we are implementing as of right now, that's factored in. But beyond that, no, it's not, and it's a valid point.
Yeah, I guess what I'm suggesting is that we should, you know, maybe in the future, look into what that really mean. Maybe we don't have all the answers because some of the things are so preliminary. But it definitely, it's, could be a big number to a small city like us.
Yeah, if I could maybe add to what Councilmember U was saying. I think once we get a better idea of how the, how the projects are being rolled out by Measure W and then how that impacts, because each project is supposed to garner some level of benefit to the communities or E-WIMs within those watersheds, then we'll have a better assessment of how much of that liability that we owe has been removed by virtue of those projects being rolled out.
Right, right, and hopefully it's not going to be a financial burden to us. And that's really what I'm trying to get to.
Yeah, but that's, that's an excellent point because if they start adding teeth to the MS4 permit, which it currently does not have as much, then, yeah, I think all cities will be facing a pretty astronomical number from a liability standpoint.
I think the, our legislators in Sacramento are, have been lobbied enough in the last year, six months to really make a change. And so I, I think it's not going to be looking forward as bleak as we think it is now with the numbers that we have. I think the state water board officials are taking another look, and there's a lot of pressure on them now. So I think a lot of just the San Gabriel Valley cities coming together and, and making their voices heard. And I know COG has done an excellent job, you know, under the lead of Diana Mumad from South Pasadena. So I, I think it's going to be better. Is it going to be, you know, perfect? Is it going to be zero? Obviously not. We're going to have to do something, but I think there's going to be some support.
All right. Thank you.
Hope you're right.
Hope so. Keep your fingers crossed.
So with all those factors in mind, here is the graph. The orange line is our expenditures, which is above our revenues. So basically, in 1920, we're looking at a deficit, actually, the next five years will be deficits. And this includes the subsidy to the landscape and lighting district. So it's important.
Did you say 1920?
Yes.
Fiscal year 2019.
Fiscal year 2019, 20, which is next year. So this sets up the stage in how we plan our budget this coming year. So the next five years, we're looking at deficit for the operations, including the transfers. You've got $240,000 in 1920, going up to $280,000, going up to $360,000, and then it dips down due to the increasing revenues I projected in the last two years. So this is what we're looking at, and that's why we presented to you that one ad valorem measure that we'd like to take up to the legislature that would definitely help our deficit balance here. Of course, that's not the only issue we will look at. We'll look at all the other expenditures and possible additional revenue stream that we can get to, to erase the deficit we have right now. So the last slide is our budget schedule. This is a tentative budget schedule. On January 30th, we gave, we gave out the packets to the departments to start working on it. Their due date to admin services is March 11th. And then their CIP and any fixed asset request is on March 22nd. We'll have the preliminary review for the department to review with the city manager and sit down, go over it, make any cuts that we need to, any adjustments. And then we hope to have a budget ad hoc committee meeting in May and a budget study session the day after Memorial Day, May 28th. With that, also, in hopes of having the budget for fiscal year 2019 adopted on June 18th. And a balanced one, hopefully. So that's it. I can answer any questions.
Does council have any questions at this time?
Plan check fees, is that new construction?
Primarily, yes.
Primarily?
Yeah, almost exclusively.
So new construction is down?
Yeah, and if, one thing...
And that includes remodel?
Remodel.
Even remodels. The community development department, in my last city manager's report, provided our annual report. And if you see the graph of the activity that's gone down the last year and a half, it's reflective, the activity that's gone down is reflective of what kind of we're seeing on the revenue side.
Brian, we, we did have an increase in ADUs, and I thought there still is, but it's not significant enough.
It's not pulling in the level of revenue that you...
A new development.
That a new development would be, would be doing, you know, the newer homes, that's where...
Square footage is a lot less.
Yeah, square footage is a lot less, so it's...
And they, I have recently talked to a few builders who build in the area. They're all projecting a reduction in, they couldn't sell their inventory.
But that's just not in Temple City. That's, that's a problem regionally.
Absolutely.
Just to follow up, so if I'm reading this correctly, there are two major hits, look like plan check and recreation fees. Is that fair to say?
Correct.
Okay, and so are we going to get something back? I know we've talked a little bit tonight about some of the things we're doing, but is there something that we're going to get back from staff as to how we're going, or if there's anything that we can do to turn this around rather than just... I know we have projections over the next five years, but obviously, we're not going to sit on our hands for the next five years.
I was going to shake a money tree and see what pulled out of it, came out of it.
Buy some lottery tickets or something, but...
Sorry.
But I'm assuming that there's some plan ahead.
As we, as we said, we made some adjustments and we're looking, there's not anything, because this, I'm not trying to diminish the, the size of the deficit at this point, but it's not, we have, we have some plans in the works and part of our job for you is to come up with some ideas, recommendations. Otherwise, on both, especially, we're going to be really, really looking hard on the expenditure side to see what things we can do without cutting services or if there are adjustments of services, seeing what kind of adjustments of services can be made. We've talked about some revenue enhancement stuff, but we'll be looking on both ends.
And I appreciate the, the looking at the expenditures. It's always nice to look to see what we can cut. But we've been doing that for a long time now, and we can only get so lean. I, I sometimes think we need to focus more on the revenue producing side and what we can do maybe, I know it's come up in previous meetings about sometimes thinking out the box. As far as, you know, construction, I mean, that's, as I said, I think that's a regional thing, not just affecting Temple City. But have we saturated? Do we have areas that developers can still build? I mean, do we, do we have that interest? It seems like, like, you know, everybody still talks about the school district. People want to live in Temple City, but are we pricing ourselves out of the market as well? So those are kind of issues I think we need to look at. For the recreation fees, I mean, I got to believe that part of this is related to our lack of facilities, especially lack of facilities that we had before, especially with the school districts. And we need to really start moving somehow towards either a joint use agreement or some type of an agreement to get those things back because they do affect, obviously, as we've seen. I think they've, they've affected our, our revenue stream tremendously. I know in talking with Kathy that a big hit is because Longnens not, hasn't been available at all because of their construction. Not much we can do about that. But at some point, it would be nice to, to get back in there and, and get back in there with an affordable project that we need to do. And I guess that's something that you and I, I guess, as part of the standing committee, I think really need to start focusing on with the school district. And if there's only one issue, then maybe we can accomplish this year with them, and that is to get something going on that because obviously, it's affecting us, not only affecting us from a monetary standpoint, but also just the human side of it. I mean, we're offering less programs to our youth, which can, can be a good thing. There's less opportunities. I don't know where these kids are going, but obviously, they're either going home and doing nothing or playing video games, but we have to be able to allow those, those programs to keep going. And, you know, I hate to see those diminish, so I, I just, I know that you're aware of those and, you know, it's like preaching to the choir here, but... aware of those, and, you know, it's like preaching to the choir here, but we'll hopefully see that in the next coming month, I'm sure is where we can go. Thank you.
Any other questions at this point?
I have one question. But when we talk about like a decrease in revenue, say from parks and recreation, my understanding is that we, that revenue that comes in, I mean, it's offsetted by the amount that we put out to run those programs. So it's not, it's not a positive revenue in the sense that we're making money from these programs.
Well, I don't know that it's a money-making situation, but we're cutting programs and we have lots available.
Right, and I think that's, it's two different, two different items completely. I wholeheartedly agree with you that if we have to, if we're cutting programs and children are not able to take advantage of, of things that possibly they have in the past, or because of the limited resources that we have and a lack of partnership with the school district in the last few years, I, I totally understand that, but I'm also under the impression that any revenue that comes in from parks and rec programs is not a, a revenue surplus. I guess maybe that's what I'm looking at.
I think it goes back into the system, and we're able to hire people, people who don't have the jobs. We're able to put those people back on, so it's a whole-
Right, but I, I just think that, that that's the added clarification is for, for people to understand that just because, you know, you're, you're lacking revenue in parks and recreation of whatever it is, 56,000 or so, that really isn't a positive cash flow that goes into like a general fund, that it's just extra added money.
No, but it goes back into the programs themselves.
No, I mean, it does go back into the programs, but, but there is a cost to have those programs. So my question was going to be, well, like, does staff have these brainstorming meetings where they sit down and say, hey, you know, this is something where we can have some revenue. We're not in the business of making money, but what can we do to stimulate business or economic development in our city so that we can get more taxes back into our city from a sales tax? I mean, you know, thank goodness for Camellia Square, right? I mean, when you look at that, yes, it was a long time coming, but thank goodness. I mean, I think there's probably just two places left to be vacant. I know there are some services there that don't provide service or sales tax, but I mean, I think there's got to be some way that there's creativity amongst our staff to look at ways to get more sales tax. I mean, we depend on that. Yeah.
Exactly.
I like with, sorry, my, so, I like, I like that line of thinking. I mean, I know for a long time, for on Camellia Square, we've been pretty hard and fast on sticking to certain parking ratios. You know, maybe it's time to relook at that again. I, I know with the internet, online, online purchase of goods these days, it's hard to get any sales tax from retail business, whereas our restaurant business is still good, and we're doing pretty well, maybe, you know.
I mean, I think that's our challenge.
Those restaurants we have there, I wonder if we, I probably don't know this, maybe we do. I know a lot of these, there's online Grubhub or whatever. Do any of these restaurants, are they part of that program? Do we know? Where-
It could be.
Where you don't have to go and actually go there and, and park and spend money or eat, but, but do they use, are they using these-
I'm sure they, I'm sure they are.
These websites and getting, having deliveries made? And do we get those tax dollars? I'm assuming we do.
Yeah, you do. It's the point, the point of sale, even if it's through a Grubhub or DoorDash, point of sale is at the actual physical location of where the-
Because every time I go on Grubhub or something like that, it says, "Delivery's not available in Temple City." I don't know if, does anybody, do you, do any of you have ever gotten a delivery from that?
No, my son has.
Did the Batuce Temple City?
Yes.
Okay, because a lot of them, they just don't do it.
There's a few of them. Actually, Grubhub is giving you-
I don't know why that's so, but you would think that would be-
Free first delivery right now. But you know, and I would encourage our, our residents too, and I think we, we need to continually remind them that there's a lot of great places in Temple City to come and eat. And, you know, like, I, I just have to say, had I not gone into the bakery at Camellia Square, I've gone there for other things, but someone just mentioned, they, they were walking out and they had this lemonade drink that looked delicious. And I was like, what is that? And they were like, it's a lemonade cooler. And I'm like, I would have never thought that this bakery would have had this lemonade cooler that was like a delicious lemonade slush you get at Disneyland with lemon in it. So I mean, there's just things to go and try, and I, and I still hear that from like my neighbors who have never been to Camellia Square, or are reluctant to go and try the variety of things that are there. There is something there for everyone, and, you know, I can't say enough about, let's get that Lyft program, you know, up and running soon so that people can just, don't have to deal with parking or parking underneath if you don't want to, and go and take advantage of, you know, the dive that's there now. It's a great place for Cajun food and, I mean-
You know, I think many of the people in Temple City, especially the longtime residents, are a little intimidated by that place.
Possibly, yes.
They see the type of restaurants there, and they just, and you're right, they don't understand. I mean, if you go into the dive, you would think, well, the dive, I'm not going there, but it's great. It's fantastic food, but you won't know until you go and try it. But getting them there, and I don't know if, if the city needs to reach out, if we need to help. I mean, I don't know what the, the, how we go about doing that, but somehow, and maybe this gets to the branding, we've talked about branding our city and stuff. How do we do, how do we educate our residents and those that live in the generally, hey, there's something here to offer, and don't be intimidated. Go in and try it, you know, and whatever we can do to facilitate that.
And I think having the chamber move here, you know, I, I don't think that can hurt us in any way. I think if, if anything, you know, I'm so grateful that the council was on board with that idea, that, you know, I, I think it's gonna, it's gonna need, we need partnerships.
Well, I understand that, but even with the chamber, I mean, it's one thing to get a member, a new member, but it's not all about getting members, it's about getting people to go to these members.
Right.
I mean, that, you know, can, can we use them to, to help advertise, to help convince people that these are great places for everybody, you know, not just, not just for the Asian community, but for everyone to go to.
You know, and, and I'm, I'm going to say this, and, and it might, I don't want anybody to take, to take this wrong, but I, I think our Connect magazine, it, you know, is great, and, and I think our residents like it. I, I just know that that, I, that's a good chunk of change, and, and I honestly think we really need to invest in an economic development person, or we need to, you know, possibly as a council, give direction to our city manager to maybe see how an economic development person can be reworked from the current staff that we have.
I agree. We've needed one.
And, you know, I don't know what that answer is or what it looks like. That's, that's why I'm on city council, I'm not a city manager, but, you know, I, I think there are possibilities that are there, and I think that, you know, it's been a long time since we've invested in economic, an economic development person. I mean, it was far beyond even before I came into council, but I just think that we need to be proactive with what our city has, and we have a lot. And I just think people need to take advantage of what we have, and, and I think Lyft will help us in marketing our city. You know, we talked about branding for years. I don't know how many downtown association conferences I attended, or conferences with the league and attended those, and we never implemented any of those things. We've, we, we talked about it, and we talked about it, but, you know, I think maybe that's our, our new year resolution as a council is to brand our city and look at ways that we can work with our city manager and our current staff to see what we can do that's going to be, you know, bringing economic development to our city. Other cities are doing it. I don't want to sit back anymore and-
Well, we have, we have obviously unique challenges because it's so built out and things, but when we do-
Opportunities.
But when we do give the opportunities, we, without some type of plan, without some type of economic development, then we're left with turning our spaces into parks, which parks are great, but it's not economic development. And so, you know, we are not going to get tax dollars from parks. We will get tax dollars though by perhaps developing those properties into income-producing areas, so.
Well, I think that's-
But you need somebody with far more knowledge than I have to look at that.
And, and I think that that's, you know, maybe a discussion for another day, but I definitely think it's something that we need to keep in mind.
I agree.
So, and, and I have not the answers. I am not the expert. I only have ideas, and, you know, an idea is only as good as everybody.
And I agree with you. I think it's time to start looking at, maybe a little bit differently, rather than looking at cutting expenditures, how to raise revenue. And we've talked about that for a long time, but we've never really pushed that direction.
We haven't.
Every time we talk about budget, we're talking about asking our staff to cut back, cut back, cut back, not, hey, guess what? We've got some extra money here because we've developed this or developed that. It's not going to be easy, but it's something that we need to start thinking about. Maybe change the course of the way we've been looking.
Yeah, I, I think, actually, the manager and I were just talking, you know, maybe some lateral, some off-the-box thinking of maybe partnering again with the school district, or maybe using their lot. I mean, because you, you talk about economic development, parking needs to go with it. Without parking, I mean, it's hard to develop. So just, and I agree with you. The, we, actually, the city never really had an economic development person, so we, we definitely should look into it. But retail, we tried so hard and, and wasn't well-received, you know, we're redoing, or rethinking about Last Tunis, and that was really part of the off-the-box thinking, at least at one time, trying to bring, bring in new, make this rebrand Temple City. Obviously, that's not going to go the way we had it, and, well, but I, I do agree with you. We definitely need to rethink that, because I think projecting the next few years is not going to be any better.
Well, three years ago, I touted in my city address, the Kmart Shopping Center.
Right.
There's not, there's not been one inch of movement in that direction. I'm sure there's reasons for it, but maybe we need to re, relook at that.
Well, I mean, to staff's credit, they finished the, a specific plan. So there's a plan that's ready to be picked up, and the developer can just, I mean, we already did the, the hard work, did the environmental impact report, so the developer just need to, if we can attract them to come, they just pick up the report and amend that.
Well, they're not going to come to us. I think we need to go to them.
Absolutely.
Somebody has to go to them and say, hey, look, this is what we have to offer. What can we do?
And then here with this is brand new, specific plan that you can use.
Right.
Yeah.
When we went-
Now that the plan's done, we should, we should be-
And we saw how that model is changing, where we, we stood in line, Councilmember Fish and I, to try and talk to one person, nobody wanted to talk to us. To bring a, a pizza place here to Temple City, and they basically told us, take a number and stand in line. And we're like, you know, they, it's the businesses that are, that have the, the money and the game is, it's, it's, the cards are in their hands right now.
Yeah, and, and obviously, the demographics does not help us. I mean, you and I sat in a meeting with Smart and Final.
Right.
And one time we said, wow, no, your, your city does not fit our demographics model.
Right, and I think by having a, someone who deals specifically with economic development, I mean, we both knew that Smart and Final would have been well-received in, in the city.
Right.
It would have. And it's people sitting in a boardroom looking at numbers saying, you have a high Asian population, they're never going to shop at Smart and Final. And that's what they told us.
And I told them I'd go there every week.
And I, and, and yet, we could tell them that, but they weren't going to come and visit and talk to people or survey them. It was just a group of people sitting in a boardroom saying, sorry, the numbers show you have an Asian population that's never going to go to Smart and Final. If they go to Smart and Final in Almonte and Alhambra, they'll see how many Asian people are shopping. I mean, and, and that's the thing, you need someone who is going to reach out to these people and, and, you know, shake them if you need to.
And we need, we need someone who's going to do it full-time, not, not someone who is going to do it in addition, in addition to their other duties. We, and we need an expert.
And, and maybe that's the challenge. How do we, you know, keep what we have that, you know, is working Connect magazine is surely well-received, and I'm not saying eliminate it, but I just think that there's, we, we can do more with our resources that we have.
We have to.
Anyway, I'm off the soapbox now.
Okay, so, I don't think I've opened the public comment for this item yet, so. Let's open the public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item? See Mr. Stafford getting up?
Mayor Mann, Mayor Pro Tempur Fish, councilmembers, city staff, the Chamber of Commerce could help us this way by coming out with a Chamber of Commerce directory, and some cities do a Chamber of Commerce visitors' guide that was, that could help get people in here to know, know what's going on. And I, I've seen chambers of commercees back east and even around here. They come out with a directory of their members, and they come out with a visitor's guide and a map. We need to do that to get us back on the map. When I was in high school, they were coming out with those like every other year, and it was bringing a lot of people in here. And if people come in here to visit, they get a visitor's guide, they take it with them, they may come back here the next time they go on vacation. And I, I like the idea of an economic development director. We need that in a bad way. There's, and what Councilmember Chavez mentioned about Kmart, nobody seems to know what's going on with Kmart and Sears. It's been, I've seen articles in the paper, they were going to close some stores. They haven't included Temple City, but, you know.
That one will be the last to close.
Yeah, that you-
I can tell you that right now.
Councilmember Chavez, you might be right. It might be the last to close.
I'm sure it will be.
But, you know, they, they've been scaling down. I've seen it. But, you know, getting back to the chamber, they can help us get people in here doing what I said. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment? Mr. Clift?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Tonight, Mr. Choi was talking about, you know, the Chamber of Commerce and everything else, and one thing he popped up, maybe nobody noticed it, was that Coupon Quarterly magazine. And I know I've used that and gone to restaurants over in Monrovia, a place I normally wouldn't go because there was a coupon in it. Maybe if we can get in a good partnership with them and have them promote businesses here now in Temple City, as long as they're part of the chamber, that might help bring people to some of these places that they normally wouldn't, just simply because you're getting a discount for, you know, two for one or something like that. We have that available right now, so, you know, economic directors, maybe later on, that'll take a lot of time, but I think this would probably be something that could be done in a reasonable amount of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Seeing none, I will close public comment. I know we already had quite a bit of council discussion, but if there's anything to add, Councilmember you.
I am good.
Thank you, Susan.
Councilmember Stifless?
Nope.
No, thank you, Susan.
Thank you, Susan, for that great presentation, and, yeah, I, I'm glad you're highlighting this so that we're aware and not blindsided about what may, of what may come in the future. And I agree with a lot of the discussion that we just had, even though it may not be directly related to the revenue, but I, I think in, in general, I will say this is, I, I feel like we have a lot of disparate pieces that we have been doing for many years, different plans, different studies, different projects that we've kind of been doing. And if you look at it in a vacuum, it's kind of hard to see maybe the bigger picture. And so maybe what we're alluding to, at least what I'm hearing from council, is a way to organize all of these things that we've been doing into a coherent manner. way to organize all of these things that we've been doing into a coherent manner, and perhaps if the city can show some sort of comprehensive, larger, bigger-picture plan of why we do what we do on all these things, then that in turn can attract the type of economic development that we kind of have conceptually. But I, I agree, I think other cities who do have economic development directors or the equivalent of that seem to function well in that respect because there's a very clear go-to person-
Yes, yes.
...to do that. So, to ask our city manager to add that on top of his additional duties is already, I would say, a little too much to, to ask, so I, I agree.
I think we need it.
Yeah, so, so I, I don't know if this, this is probably ancillary to this specific topic, but perhaps we should bring back this as an item for further discussion. We have, I know in the coming meetings, we're going to be talking, we will be continuing to talk about Last Tunis. We will also be looking at, Mr. Cook, you've alluded to revenue streams that the council would have to look at. So, those are the different pieces, so we're counting on you, Mr. Cook, to, at least during the discussion of each of those items, to remind us of the bigger picture. I'm sure council will be aware of that, but it's always nice to know that we're not discussing this in isolation, that every decision we make on one item is going to have an impact on-
On something else.
-on something else, so. So, I, I think, just like how in all of our staff reports, you're constantly reminding us of strategic plan visions and one-sentence, you know, remarks, but perhaps in all these economic development-related discussions, there also needs to be a quick reminder about how that connects to everything else. I don't think we've really mapped it out, at least visually. Okay, all right, so, having said that, do we, may I have a motion for this item?
Mayor Mann, to make a motion, we received the 2018, 2019 mid-year budget review and related reports, authorized staff to revise the revenue estimates as indicated in attachment A, and authorized staff to revise expenditure estimates as indicated in attachment B.
Second?
We have a motion in a second. There are no objections. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protemper Fish?
Yes.
Yes, so, that, that motion carries. Thank you. And so, next, we have an update from our city manager.
Mayor Mann, I'll be brief. Thank you to the park staff, the Temple City Chinese American Association for pulling off Lunar New Year. Actually, really good crowd later in the day, the morning did not look so, looked a little grim, but as daybreak opened up, it was great, and we actually had probably one of the bigger crowds we've had over the years. Camellia Festival this weekend, I'm sure several were mentioned, you know, starting on Friday, knock on wood for our weather, with the SGV, San Gabriel Valley Economic Development Partnership, and the San Gabriel Valley Cog Technical Advisory Committee with the, with the city managers' group. Big things we're dealing with are COTI management, dealing with Measure W, and also, too, some of the, a lot of cities are upset with the Measure H funding and how that's been distributed. In fact, that's going to the cog to ask for a direct allocation of those funds, rather than going through a very convoluted grant process, which many cities that went and did that actually had great plans and did not get coordinators and whatnot.
What age did the homeless?
Did the homeless one, yeah. A lot of cities are pretty upset, and rightly so, right now, in that process, so those are some of the big, big items that are coming up, so. And then-
Brian?
State of the City next Tuesday.
State of the-
Here, the mayor mentioned it during his comments, but this reminder, State of the City here will be using the tent from the Camellia Festival. Thank you, Camellia Festival, as part of the reception at six, State of the City here at seven. Sorry, Councilmember-
No, no, is the economic partnership doing anything jointly with cities at ICSC?
Yeah, they're, they're retooling, they're retooling, so we're part of the, we are part of the consortium that actually went out and purchased a few years ago a participation with ICSC, so they, they go out and represent us as well, and several other cities, so they'll be out, they're going to actually eliminate doing the Los Angeles one and going to focus on the Las Vegas one.
Remember the very nice booklets or pamphlets that we took?
Yes.
Do we still have those to give to the chamber?
I believe we have a few dozen left. I'll double, I'll double-check, and I'll pass up those along.
Okay, thank you.
That's it, Mayor Mann.
Thank you. Next, we have an update from our city attorney.
No report tonight, sir.
Great, thank you. Council reports on ad hoc or standing committee meetings, do we have any for tonight? All right, seeing none.
Mr. Mayor, while we audit, the committee did not meet recently, but tonight, we have as well the item that we did pass, so maybe I should use this opportunity to mention it.
Sure, sure.
So, tonight, well, the, how, not the audit, standing committee consisting of Councilmember Chavez and myself, we've been working with staff on the financial audit of the city, and also, we have also discussed the comprehensive annual financial report for the city, and that's one of the items that we passed today during our earlier agenda, Agenda 7E, but I probably should have asked the city manager and our financial director to make a presentation, but it is really a great clean of bill of health. The city's doing well. I don't know all the financial terms to say, but needless to say that the financial, the independent auditor looked at our, the city's finance, and also the way we've been doing, recording our financial, and they came back with an unmodified report, which means that we're doing very good. So, I want to take the opportunity to thank Mrs. City Manager and Susan and her staff to, we're doing such a great job, so. You have anything to add?
Well-stated, I think, I'm glad you brought that up.
Yeah.
This was just a culmination of what we talked about at the last meeting, actually.
Yeah.
But, you know, it was just a big shout-out to staff and our, of course, our audit committee, and, I mean, our auditors, and working well together, so congratulations.
Thank you, and thanks for sharing that. It's great news. And just a quick, quick thing, just so everyone knows, the facilities, infrastructure, standing committee that Councilmember Yu and I belong to will be meeting this Friday?
This Friday, one o'clock.
We have a draft pavement management plan that we hope to bring back to council at our next meeting, so it's just a, just a preview. Okay, so, council items separate from the regular agenda, Councilmember Sternquist?
Just one thing, I attended the, the vector control meeting, and under the leadership of the San Gabriel Valley Mosquito District, Mr. Dever has recommended that we form a legislative committee with San Bernardino's County Vector Control, LA County, Orange County, and the San Gabriel Valley, to actually form this legislative group that will go to Sacramento, talk about legis, legislation that will help with the, trying to, well, we're never going to get rid of them, but trying to eradicate as many as we can of the various mosquitoes that are in the, in the area.
Are they affected by the weather, because it-
They are.
It seems like, I haven't seen a lot since it's been so cold.
Right, they love hot weather, and so they breed dramatically in, in hot weather, but hopefully, by having this group come together, each county is not working independently, and like the cog, we're hoping that there's a louder voice working together, so everybody is on board now, it's just the logistics of how to get the people on board to serve on these committees, and then set a timeline of when the committee members will go to Sacramento to talk to the legislators, and actually to coordinate a lot with the water districts, because there's got to be some coordination, because they go hand-in-hand. They're breeding in water, and sometimes it seems like there's no coordination, like the thing with the rain barrels, and, and that became more of a nuisance than it did a help, but who knew that they could get, you know-
Who knew?
-into the water barrels with not the proper screen, so-
Well, you're solving one problem with creating a-
And creating another one. So, hopefully, this new coalition of vector control members will help make things better, so, pretty much that's it. Looking forward to the Camellia Festival. I know there's been a lot of hard work by, you know, everyone involved in that, and just bring a really heavy jacket and you'll be fine, so, see everybody out this weekend.
That's great.
Thank you. Next, Councilmember Yu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very quickly, we've been, have a lot of rain lately, but I want to give a shout-out to city staff for the preparation, because as far as I know, there's no flooding, no issues, so, I mean, that doesn't happen by accident, that was by planning. I know Mr. City Manager and his staff have been out checking storm drains, clearing them, and doing all that ahead of time, and-
Right.
-monitoring it while during a lot of the downpour, so just wanted to say that, great job.
And I appreciate the constant communication from you, Brian, also with letting us know what's going on, so, yeah, thank you.
He drives around the streets.
Don't clean the storm drains up.
Not yet. Not yet.
If we tell him to, I think he'll-
That question came up, though, I wish to bring it up now before I forget it, there's some, some of our sewers have grates over them, and many do not. Is there a reason-
The storm drains?
-for the storm drain, the grates?
Yeah.
Or are they only required in certain ones?
No, that goes back to the issue that Councilmember Yu was bringing up related to NPDs, and it has to do with the trash, TMDL, related to that, so-
Are we supposed to have grates on all of them?
That's a-
Maybe you shouldn't answer that in public, but-
That's, well, we are in compliance with, we are in compliance with the current TMDL-
Right.
-total maximum daily load of a pollutant or a particular type of substance, in this case, trash, and we are in compliance with that. John Hunter and Associates, who provides that service to most contract cities throughout LA County and other full-service cities as well, does that service for us and checks it, so that's part of that program. Yes, we don't have it, and if you go to most cities around the San Gabriel Valley, you'll see that kind of sporadically throughout the area, so there are some challenges with those in terms of maintenance costs, long-term maintenance costs, and cleanouts as well, so, yeah, that's why you have it.
And kind of related to, you see Athens, when they do the street sweeping, I know they come along and they do the gutter, but then they come to an opening, and I don't know that they go around those, or if the stuff just kind of falls in.
That's part of your, that's part of your TMDL compliance related to-
So, they're not supposed to push the stuff into the-
No, no, they're, they're supposed to try to capture that so it doesn't actually go into the system.
Right.
So, that's part, that's part of why you went to once a week in, in order to try to meet that, meet that requirement.
Cool. Did you have anything else, Councilmember Yu?
Just look forward to the Camellia Festival, obviously our biggest event, and State of the City, looking forward to that. We're going to have some-
Absolutely.
-I think really nice changes. I'm looking forward to it being outside and having the food first. It's just going to be nice, it's be, I think it's nice to, you know-
The reception's outside, not the State of the City.
The reception's outside.
It's not too cold.
Right, well, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll, we'll see how, how that works.
How that works, it'll, I think it'll be great.
I was telling Mayor Protemper Fish before the meeting, I'll be the guinea pig to switch it up a little bit.
I think it's great.
We could all learn from that. So, anyway, just a couple of things, I do want to commend staff as well as the Temple City Chinese American Association for helping put together the Lunar New Year celebration. Despite the date change, we still got a pretty good turnout. That was the, my greatest fear was you change the date and everyone just, you know, either forgets, or, you know, we had competing festivals that other cities were having, and, and we know the reason why we had our original date was so that we wouldn't be conflicting with-
Right.
-other, other planned events, but at the end, it was, it was fantastic. I want to thank them for putting that together. I do want to just give a quick update, as you know, I'm the council liaison to the chamber, as Mr. Choi alluded to earlier, and so this past Friday, we had the chamber board meeting, and one of the things that Mr. Choi asked me to help update the board with was related to council discussions on Last Tunis. So, what I did was I took the, I shared the same presentation that we had from last November, and all the, all the board members had a copy of it, and I went through sort of like a five, 10-minute quick highlights of what, of not just the presentation, but also the council discussion about how we decided to expand the scope to look at the entire stretch of Last Tunis. That wasn't captured in the report, but that was part of our discussion. I also encouraged the board to actually look into it, and what I was going to, what I was going to do was maybe write a couple of questions for the board to consider so that we could at least get some formal written feedback as to-
That's a good idea.
No, at least we get some, some feedback, and we can decide how, how that plays into future decision-making, because they were, they appeared appreciative of-
Good.
-of being privy to that information, and they look forward to the board future discussions on that item, so I just wanted council to know. Looking forward to the 75th Camellia Festival, 75 years, it still blows my mind, that's a crazy number. Congratulations to all the volunteers who worked so hard to make this happen. I know it's, there's a lot of stuff going on behind the scenes that, you know, if you don't get a glimpse into it, it's, it's hard, sometimes it's hard to really appreciate all the time and planning. It goes into, and, sure Mayor Protemper Fish knows from your experience as director-
A little bit.
Just a little bit, right, yeah. And last but not least, yeah, I'm anxious and, and looking forward to the State of the City.
It's going to be great.
It's really like the flyer that staff came up with.
Yeah, it's nice.
We were trying to, we were tinkering with a bunch of different drawings.
It's nice.
And I think the original idea was they were trying to play off of the fact that I was an engineer, so there were, at first, some engineering things going on, and I said, um, maybe, maybe not.
Maybe not.
So, I think, I think this is nice, so, if you don't know, the theme is building our future, and I thought, actually, the inspiration for that was from Councilmember Sternquist last year, which was building our story, so I thought this would be a-
It's great.
-nice segue. I think a lot of topics are still going to be relevant, and in fact, without spoiling anything, even from tonight's discussion on the various items we've had, a lot of you actually touched upon a lot of those issues that I plan to cover, so it actually makes me feel better, because that means I'm on, on point about certain things, I'm not going off the rails with, with council policy and directions, so, so thank, thank you for giving me a little bit of a sense of preparation for next week, so. Okay, and moving on to reimbursements, we have none. Additional public comments? Is there any additional public comments at this time? Thank you. So, I'll close public comment, and we are adjourned for tonight. Good night.
All right.